To talk to you about how to meditate upon the Word of God. You are going to love it today, I'm telling you. You are going to really learn and benefit from this wonderful teaching today. I'm teaching on enjoying and receiving spiritual nourishment. Because, you know, how do we receive? We receive not only by reading the Word. We receive by meditating, because that's when the nourishment happens. That's when the nourishment comes. But let me just quickly say my hello, it's like I always enjoy. So hello to Ruth. You know, thank you for being with me. A lot of you are on with me every single day. I see your names over and over like Akshita. I see that name every day. And she always puts the hearts, you know. She's one of my students, by the way, at BHI. And hello to Francis, hello to Mina, hello to Kamal, hello to Peter, and hello to Evangelist Brian. Bless your heart, you're all so sweet. I see so many names, same names almost every day. I see Maureen, God bless you from Cape Town. Wow, so many precious people coming on. Lord, I pray you'll bless them. Hello to Justin from Ghana, I see your name a lot too. Lord, bless your people today and feed us your word today. Lord, help us receive the blessed truth from your word. We give you the praise. And God's people said, amen and amen. Listen, real quick, Thursday, this Thursday is New Year's Eve. So we have a service, we have a New Year's Eve service, starts at 9:00 PM on the East Coast. You can register on Zoom beginning today, because it's a Zoom healing service. It's communion, by the way. We will have communion at midnight. So we're going to end the new year with communion. And I always have it just about midnight exactly. I actually start around, you know, 11:50, somewhere there. So when we begin the new year, we're already chewing or drinking the, you know, the bread and/or drinking the cup of wine or cup of juice. But it's going to be a precious, precious time. I know some people like to drink wine in communion rather than juice, but that's for a whole different teaching. You know, so what did they drink in the New Testament? I can assure you, they were not drinking grape juice. But anyways, it's the kind of wine. I hope my mic is alright. Okay, good. In the Holy Land, the kind of wine that they grow or grew back then is a whole different wine than it is today. So, Lord, give us a wonderful time today in your word. I pray you'll bless your people with truth in the name of Jesus. And God's people said, amen. All right, I told you about this preacher, an old farmer preacher, who was preaching one time in a conference. And these two young men were there. And one of them said, who's this man? He said, oh, he's the speaker today, and he's a farmer who did not finish high school. So one of the guys said, oh, it's going to be quite boring today, so I'll endure this painful experience. And when the man got up to speak, he was so anointed, and the presence of God came in so strong, they were, both of them were absolutely amazed. And went up to the man after he was done, this is a true story, after he was done, and they said, how come God is using you like this? They said, well, boys, he said, I read my Bible every day, and then I go to work on my farm, and I see how the cows chew the cud, and I chew the same thing in my heart. I chew the cud, I chew the word. And it was quite amazing to these men to find out, these young men to find out, that's the way we get a part of God, meditation. I want to talk to you about meditation. Meditation is not study. You know, our brains study the Bible. Our hearts meditate on the Word. So how do I meditate upon the Word of God? You know, when a cow begins to eat the grass, you know, that's a quick job. But then a cow likes to chew over and over and over. They chew that grass to get the nutrients out of it. This is what it means to meditate. We chew and chew over and over and over. But this is all very spiritual. It's not mental. So there's a lot of people that study the Bible, but they don't really understand it, they don't even know it. Many, you know, read the Bible, they still don't know it. You cannot receive nourishment, spiritually speaking, without meditation. Well, that's the same as the body digesting food, you know. So we don't digest food ourselves by just chewing it well, and they tell you, you need to chew it, you know, so many times, even as human beings. But think about our digestive system in the body. Well, that's our meditation in the spirit. We have to digest the food we receive. How do I digest spiritually? Now, you know, a lot of us have problems digesting even in the natural. For example, when the papaya is in season, I eat a lot of papaya after I eat, because it's known that papaya helps you digest. Today, I take these papaya supplements that help me digest my food, because a lot of us, including myself, you know, I have a hard time digesting food, and I like to get papaya to help me digest. But what do we do spiritually? There's no papaya to take or any supplements to take. But there is a secret I'm going to give you today. All right, so when it comes to the Word of God, let's read first of all, and remember, I began yesterday by talking about, and I'm going to Psalm 19 quickly. But do you remember yesterday I talked about how Moses sent the children of Israel daily to gather manna? Well, we have to do the same thing. Daily, we gather the Word of God. We come and we receive the Bible. It's a matter of discipline, it's a matter of obedience. It says, "The law of the Lord," I'm reading verse 7, Psalm 19. "The law of the Lord is perfect, converting the soul. The testimony of the Lord is sure, making wise the simple." Wow, so when I receive the word, I become wise, making wise the simple. But how do I get that? How do I get that? Well, Bible study and Bible meditation are not the same. I just said that to you. Bible study is up here, meditation is right here. How do I get the nutrients from the Word of God? What do I do to get the nutrients? Well, first, and this is what I left you off yesterday. We have to apprehend, we have to understand the Word of God. We have to apprehend it, capture it, understand it. How do I do that? Well, let's look at Psalm 119, which we looked at yesterday, but I'm going to expand on that now. We're going to go into a little deeper territory here, and I pray you'll be ready for that, I'm sure you are. Psalm 119 and verse 99. It says in the word, "I have more understanding than all my teachers; for thy testimonies are my meditations. I understand more than the ancients," meaning people who are older or aged, "because I keep thy precepts." Wow, that's amazing. And you know what is so amazing? Is what it says after, it says, "I have refrained, I have refrained my feet from an evil way, from every evil way, that I might keep thy word." That's what meditation does. It allows us to live holy lives. For David says, "I have refrained my feet from every evil way." Well, how does that happen, meditation? So it begins with the first phase. And there's three things we have to do to meditate. Number one, we receive the word, and we begin to understand what it says. You can't really meditate, you can't get your spirit active without understanding what have you read. Well, for that, you have to know the meaning of the words. You have to understand why he wrote what he wrote. Let's just look at something very, very simple. How do I study the Bible? Well, first, and this is all mental, like I said. First, I have to understand the book. Like, let's say we take one of the books of the Bible. I have to see it as a whole book, because there was no chapters when the Bible was written. That came way later by a Frenchman, many, many years after the Bible was written. So, but the way is I take the whole book, whether it's Genesis, whether it's Exodus. So I take the whole book, and I read it over and over and over and over, and then I get the message. I read it at least 12 times or more to get the actual message of the book, like what is the book about? Then I go back, and I go chapter by chapter, and I look at the meanings. Like, what does this mean? What does this mean? What does this mean? But I have to understand, like, why was it written? Whether it's Genesis, whether it's any book of the Bible. I sit at the whole book, and why was it written? To whom was it written? Once I get all that, then I go back, and I look at each verse, and I get the meaning of the words. That's how I do it. I get the message of the book as one book. Why was it written? To whom was it written? And now I go back, and I look at the meaning of each word in each verse that I don't understand. And then once I understand, that's my first step. So now I get it. I understand what God is talking about, any books. If you look at, let's say Galatians. Paul wrote Galatians. Galatians is the story of liberty from bondage. Why did he write it? Because Judaizers were going about in Galatia, part of Turkey today, trying to convince the believers, the Gentile believers, that they had to obey Moses, they had to get circumcised and obey the law. That's why it was written. So one simple fact is, Paul wrote to the church in Galatia because the church in Galatia was being lied to about grace, about faith. They were told, you have to live like the Jews lived in the Old Testament. You have to get circumcised physically. You have to obey all the commandments to be a Christian. And Paul had the right to say, wrong. Now, when you read that amazing book, and you go and see the meaning of each word, then you can go back and start to meditate upon what he said and why he said it and so on. Meditation is our spiritual digestive system. It's our chewing the word. So here's what happens. You get the understanding in your head first, in your mind first, because this is what it begins. Now, slowly, as you digest it, that understanding becomes revelation truth. Once it becomes revelation truth, you meditate upon it. You begin to meditate. And you don't have to take a whole book. You can take parts of a chapter, begin with small amounts. And that is the way we all begin, frankly. But when I started as a Christian, I couldn't do what I do today, you know. When I take a whole book, and I meditate upon the whole message of a book. When I began, goodness, I was only starting with like a few verses. But it's hard, it's hard to do it with a few verses, because you don't really understand why he wrote the chapter. You don't understand why he wrote what he wrote. So to me, I can meditate today way easier than I could have when I was young. And at that time, I didn't even know what meditation was, to be honest with you, because I thought it was all mental. Today, I know what it means. So that's why I'm talking to you. You understand first, you get that first. This could take you years, by the way, before you really get it. Some it may take them less, it depends on their maturity in the Lord. Now, you meditate like this. You have to begin to, what I say, assimilation. This is way more than understanding. This is where the spirit feeds, the human spirit begins to feed. It's not enough, like I said, to take in spiritual food. We have to digest that food. So this is where the heart begins the process of meditation. You know, people can eat a lot, yet be undernourished if they're not digesting right. If a body does not digest properly, that body will get sick eventually and die. So we have to develop our spiritual digestive system. And our spiritual food, once we digest it, begins to develop in us our spiritual character. No different than food that we eat physically begins to develop our bodies, you know. So our spiritual food is what develops our spiritual character. And we have got to get to the place where we go through, and that's what I do now. So I'm going to get really, really simple with you. Let's say I read, whether it's Galatians, Philippians, I just finished reading Romans, and now I'm nearly done with 1 Corinthians. And I read quite quickly. I did the whole book of Romans in one day yesterday. Today, I read from chapter 1 to chapter 13 of Corinthians. So 13 chapters I did today, and I captured every bit of it. I know this is not something that some people can do, but look, I've been in this a long time, I better be able to do that now. Now, today, I will be meditating, maybe even tonight, on what I read. I'll go through it. But it's no longer something that's in my mind, because I know it already mentally. I start to live it spiritually. I start to, boy, this is a tough one to explain, because it's not mental. It's an inner chewing of the Word of God. It's an inner chewing where every part of me wants to know it and wants to live it and wants to experience it. And it's the Holy Spirit who builds that hunger inside of me. So when I read, and I've reread and memorized the Beatitudes, when you read that amazing sermon of the Lord in Matthew, especially Matthew, I think that's the clearest of all, even though it's repeated in other Gospels. You lay in your bed, because you can't really meditate if you're active. You lay in your bed, boy, I just said something powerful here. You know that the cow doesn't chew when it's walking around. It's chewing when it's laying down. So you have to be at peace. And the Bible makes it very clear that meditation happens usually at night. David talked about that, and I'll show you some scriptures today. So I lay down, and I go through in my spirit man, and I begin to question, am I living what the Lord said? Do I love my enemies? Am I able to forgive? Am I able to do what the Lord told me to do? Let my light shine among men? And it starts to stir within me. It's a spiritual thinking rather than a physical thinking. And then I begin to desire it with all my being. Not that I'm going to get there tomorrow, but eventually it'll change my character. That digestive system in the spirit will eventually bring that out of me, spiritually, that I'm going to start living it. So whatever I read, I begin to, you know, that salaah. You know what salaah means? Salaah means rest in it, not just think about it. Like, if I could say, drown in it. Let it permeate your being. Let that word you've read just go deep in your spirit man, and you start tasting it spiritually. You just, if I can say, and I know it doesn't make sense to say feel it spiritually, but there is such a thing as feeling it spiritually, even though feelings are soulish. The spirit man has depth. We can't say feel, but that's the closest thing we can come to. It's that incredible joy that the word produces in you and the joy that you receive just wanting it, desiring it, praying it be you, wanting it with all your being. Often, when I read the Bible, I'll stop and I'll say to the Lord, oh, how I want this, oh, how I want this. And I sometimes think about it all day long. My greatest, my greatest cry, oh, that I may be counted among the righteous. Every time I read any portion in the Bible that talks about the righteous standing before the Lord, being accepted by the Lord, being welcomed by the Lord, everything within my spirit man comes alive. Or if I read a portion, like in the Psalms, "Give me not over to the will of the enemy." Everything in my being cries, do it for me, Lord. But it's a meditation upon that truth that goes within me, and it becomes my prayer. It becomes my longing. It becomes my desire. It becomes a part of my cry in my life. And the more I meditate upon it, the more it takes hold of me. It takes hold of my character. So this is a form of digesting. And the Bible has something beautiful to say about this. Let's look at Psalm 63. Oh, this is so precious. Psalm 63, very quickly. Today, I'm going to go a little, a little longer with you, because I want to finish this teaching. I may go just a few minutes long. Look at verse 5 and look at verse 6. "My soul shall be satisfied as with marrow and fatness, and my mouth shall praise thee with joyful lips when I remember thee upon my bed." See what I said earlier? You can't meditate when you're like running around. "When I remember thee upon my bed and meditate on thee in the night watches." Isn't that a beautiful verse? You know, I was trying to explain to you verse 5. "My soul shall be satisfied as with marrow and fatness," as with the best fat, you know, talking about abundance, like when people eat naturally. It's a spiritual abundance. It's a spiritual fatness. That's what meditation is. It's what it takes you, it takes hold of you on the inside of you. And what you've read now is a cry coming out of you, that you want it. That's meditation. So meditation is not, I'm going to think it over and over and over. No. Do you remember what Paul said in Colossians 3:16? "Let the word of Christ dwell within you richly, richly." And then he said something powerful that is also a part of meditation. And this is what meditation is all about. No, it's quite simple, but it's quite difficult for some people to really get it all. So I'm just going to bring it down for you. I'm going to break it down. "Let the word of Christ dwell richly within you in all wisdom, teaching, admonishing one another in psalms, in hymns, in spiritual songs, singing with grace in your hearts to the Lord." That's meditation. So meditation becomes very musical in the spirit man. Not only when I am admonishing, you know, whether it's Chad or Suzanne, my wife, or other people that I know. It's more than that. Because out of my abundance, I start talking it. But it's got to be first a part of my inner music, in my inner man. So you lay on your bed, or you're in your quiet times, and suddenly, it's like the song of the Lord arises in your being, and you start to sing scriptures. You start to meditate and make melody to scriptures. That's happened with so many, many, many times. When I start singing, putting melodies to the word inside of me. It's not songs that I, you know, write or songs that I sing, you know, in a service. Sometimes it's a spontaneous thing that happens with me, that I'm not even prepared for it minutes before. But suddenly, it comes upon me, and I'm like, I'm gone in the spirit. So meditation isn't just that cry within. Meditation is not just that holy desire within for what you've read and been reading. But meditation is where melody comes in. It's called spiritual songs, singing with grace in your hearts. That's meditation. And then something else happens. Now it's application. So the three, the three, if you want to write them down one more time, apprehension, where I understand it, assimilation, where I digest it, and then application, where I live it. And that's the final process, where there is that practical outworking of that process of meditation. So it begins to build my character. It begins to nourish my faith. It begins to adjust my life. Now my life is adjusted to, you know, get in line with what God says in his word that I should be like. It adjusts me into that place that God wants me to be in. And it conforms our lives to God's word, that we may obey it. You all remember what it says in Joshua 1:18, right? "This book of the law will not depart out of your mouth." You'll meditate therein day and night. And meditation will birth visions. The dumbest observe. And then observation, which is vision, brings action, application. And so you get the information. It becomes observation. It becomes application. I said something here that's really quite powerful right now. These are the three headlines, if I can say it. I get the word, information. Vision is born through meditation now called observation. And finally, application. I start living it. I start applying it to my life. Now finally, before we all say goodbye, I want you all to go with me to Psalm 1. And look, and we've all read that Psalm many times. But look what it says, this beautiful. "Blessed is the man that walks not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor stands in the way of sinners, nor sits in the seat of the scornful; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law doth he what, meditate day and night." So here we see in verse 2, he delights in it. So meditation is something we enjoy. His delight is in the law of the Lord. His delight is in the law of the Lord. In his law, he meditates day and night. It's something we enjoy. Look at what happens in verse 3. "He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that brings forth his fruit in his season. His leaf also will not wither. Whatever he doeth will prosper." You know what this says? It says fruitfulness. I go from enjoying it to being nourished and being fruitful in the Lord. "He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that brings forth his fruit in his season. His leaf will not wither. Whatever he do, he will do prosperous." So I go into this amazing season where I'm nourished and I'm fruitful suddenly. And then it says something else. Verse 3 again. "He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that brings forth his fruit in his season. His leaf also shall not wither." You know what that means? Healing. Because it says, "His leaf will not wither." Leaves always talk about healing. And I love what it says, "Whatever he will do will prosper," prosperity. So think about what I just showed you. Meditation. Once I enjoy it, because it says he delights in it, verse 2. Now I see fruitfulness, I see nourishment, I see healing, I see success in my life and much more. All because of meditation. I pray today that the Holy Spirit... You know, it's a heavenly language. It's hard to explain meditation because it's a heavenly language. It's a heavenly activity, it's not a mental thing. When suddenly everything in me is chewing and chewing and expanding and chewing, Lord of God, in my spirit man, with desire, with prayer, with melody in my heart, with every part of my being wanting it. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, in the glorious name of Jesus, let them experience what I've been talking about. Holy Spirit reveal to them the depth of what I've been saying, even though some of it may not be fully understood mentally. Let them understand it spiritually. Let them experience it spiritually. Let them live it spiritually. "His delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law doth he meditate day and night." Let it be their life story in the name of Jesus. Their life's experience in the name of Jesus. And God's people said, amen. Thank you for letting me be with you a little longer than normal today. It's time now to give to the Lord's work. The Bible is clear that those who love Him are givers. Paul said, "Prove the sincerity of your love," in Corinthians. "Prove the sincerity of your love." You can read that there in 2 Corinthians 8. And then he said in 2 Corinthians 9, "If we sow sparingly, we reap sparingly; if we sow bountifully, we reap bountifully." And in the same chapter, he said, "God gives seed to the sower." So if you want God to bless you financially with seed, you must be a sower. God will give seed to the sower. Every time I had a need, I always sowed a seed. I'm telling you. It's worked in my life for nearly 49 years now as a Christian. Every time I had a need, I sowed a seed. And God supernaturally met my need. It didn't always come when I wanted it to, but it came right on time. No, no, the Lord is never late. He's never early, but he's never late. He comes right on time. Say, well, why is he never early? To keep us on our knees, to keep us in faith, believing, you know? But God has never missed one appointment with us. He's always on time. Though he tarry, wait for him. Your miracle is surely on the way. But never give up giving and never give up believing and never give up sowing seed. Because that's His Word, you know? That's His Word. "In due time you will reap, if you faint not." So it's not time to faint and give up. All right, Father, bless them. Bless them financially, meet every need, let this be a blessed season for them and a great new year and a blessed 2021, way better than 2020, Lord, in Jesus' name, much brighter, amen. All right, you can sow your seed now. Benny Hinn Ministries. I'll run that on the screen for you. You can go, do it on the platform you're watching me on, where it says donate or give. Or simply go to BennyHin.org. Or you can text it, B H M, B like the letter, B H M, and to the numbers 45777. Tomorrow, a very exciting day, I'm gonna have with me a dear man to talk about health, how to stay healthy in 2021. You're gonna really enjoy it. Much love. Shalom.